And we are not live streaming, please click. The video recording will be available on the computer. So with the fire department, we're going to take a trigger that's a press release home as the building. To modernize some of the government. Or about the safety of the park. So a month. First item on the. First item on the agenda is. Uh, yes, it's circulated. For members are. In April, September seventeenth. Trustee.
You won't get to sit in the room.
September nineteenth. Great. And close out. For a basic committee for August fifteenth, twenty forty four. Unless here are comments or suggestions, change those, is there motion to approve those? So. Move the second, all in favor. Carries. Next item on the agenda. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Before I. Read that. Public comment deals with. Where are the tenants who want to talk about items not on the agenda? There is. I don't know. People are on black or something down on the channel when I talk about here. There's one item that I have to add, which is that question, the village board reports. So if you can hold on to those comments. Manager. That's the. Thought field. With a hundred and thirty. That's why I was. Pressing my back so. That's something I want to talk about. I. Yes, then I may ask that you hold on. So public comment, this is where we allow members to public to address the village board on topic. It's within our purview and jurisdiction, but it's not listed in another. H W. On a stock market, listed on the agenda, wait till that agenda is called and we'll get you out. Speak. If your matter is on consent agenda, let us know and we will move the matter to consent agenda. Anyone's firing speech should go out of this speaker board on lists. Have. Personally. Then it's the manager. The public comment time is an opportunity to make comments to the village board and listen to what they have to say, but this is not ordinarily a time for discussion or engagement by the village. Appropriately, we ask the village manager or other village staff to respond to questions or issues raised at a later rate. All speakers are limited to three minutes. And to prepare all, we'll certainly afford you to do that. We ask that all speakers, we respect closed civil, but not competitive. And we ask that all members of the audience refrain from applauding or making any other comments during or after the same speaker. Is there anyone who wants to speak on an issue not on the agenda? For. The president. Is.
Yes, thank you. I I'm on the agenda, so I just thought that was like a sign.
You're fine. Goodness, I am.
Yeah. So I don't need to say you now.
Okay, good. All right. That takes care of public comment. Next item on the agenda is reports of committees, that is when the village. Uh, we work on the board. Our committee work that they've attended over the last month. First report is the city of the whole. Here. See, two hours, we got our man, the whole committee started five. This evening, and we talked about. How this version, we had a discussion about possible updates to our workers' regulating backyard chickens on private property. Second, we got a report from our development services director on village code updates. Third, we had a discussion with our communications manager on draft one code proclamation policy. And finally, we had a discussion regarding draft updates to the village's communication plan. And we did that just a few. Uh, the next report is the finance committee, normally. That's our representative on that, but as we've discussed, he's home, so I'm going to ask our. Manager and finance director to keep a report on the finance.
Okay. So yesterday's financial committee, the committee discussed the financial reports for the month of September. As of the end of September, our general fund revenue performance for a number of villages. Resources exceeded both monthly and budgetary targets and prior year receipts to complete property taxes, which is great times this year. Parking fees, sewer charges, and the nine one one surcharge revenue. We discussed that our sales taxes continue to lag from our budgetary targets, which primarily due to some one type sales that happened last year and also some trends that we've seen go down in auto sales. Our water fund revenue. Target. Um, and we're expecting those expenditures to come up in line with capital projects scheduled later. This year, and expenditures and all other funds are within budgetary targets. And staff reported that we're seeing an increase in personnel and benefit expenditures, which is as planned, as we fill vacancies in the public safety department. Lastly, the committee also discussed updates to the village's prior year financial forecast and the initial property tax levy estimate as part of the calendar year twenty five budget process. The full draft budget will be presented to the finance committee in November. Everyone's invited. We invite the entire board and the public's invited to the town as well. And the property tax levy hearing date also been set for November twenty first, twenty twenty four. So that will be published in the newspaper and we'll hold that here.
Next report is the management. Trustee listeners are represented on that. And I would be wanting to congratulate trustee listener for not rubbing our respective noses in the face. He was the one village board member who voted. But cats and chickens.
So I guess I stayed consistent in my decision.
And I'm not confessing at all that she was right, but it's clearly true that we would have waited.
I do think they're cute. Um, so the planning commission didn't leave in September, you know, we had. Had done a presentation of the preliminary draft and the company had planned to the village board in September. We're continuing to tweak the plan and we'll be having a public hearing in November. Um, our next meeting for the planning commission will be here at TCA Center and October thirtieth, where we'll be. Reviewing the proposal to final subdivision. With the new last subdivision of drive.
The next report is the Gulf Advisor Committee and Trustee Paul Wicks is our representative on that.
Good evening. Another positive report. We had above average temperatures for the month of September, which has positive revenues, they're twenty five percent. Really wonderful popular event called the heat in Stargaze that took. Place on the Gulf for some future local economy experts, future volunteers, students, and also. Interact activities to fit. We had a hundred and seventy five attendees in Georgia. Friends of the Gulf, Glencoe Gulf had a successful month and received a hundred thousand dollars in donations. And last week, the Gulf Advisor Board is meeting on Monday to review the draft twenty twenty five budget.
Thanks for that report. The next report is sustainability task force, trustee people of us is our representative on that. So, George.
Good evening, everyone. Um, on August twenty seventh. Um, here we, at our meeting, we've tried to plan our twenty twenty five initiatives. Um, in twenty twenty five, we will continue our efforts to educate and promote the renewal of Buckhorn. Um, we'll also encourage the. We will also work to engage other community agencies and partners and work with them to find areas of mutual interest. We will also continue to oversee the development of a sustainability action plan and begin planning for our tenth anniversary by reviewing our accomplishments and their impact. Um, also at that meeting, we planned some communications for the remainder of the year and discussed a little version of the comprehension, sorry, comprehensive plan. Also, um. We, um, we attended a session at the Swansea office regarding an app called the Recycling Coach. The Illinois EPA has contracted with Recycling Coach to provide a mobile app and website plugin for residents that will answer recycling and garbage disposal questions. Um, the implemented state. Sorry, the information in the app will be customized for every community. This app was recently implemented statewide in New Jersey and early indications are that helps improve recycling and waste disposal practices. Village staff has submitted information to the vendor and is waiting to hear what the next steps are necessary for implementation. Vendor expects that the app will go live by the end of the year and at our last meeting, uh, we began to promote this. We began to promote this app to our residents. Thank you.
Next report is the council for community and our representative on that is President Scott.
Thank you. The G C I C met on Monday, October seventh, and began with updates from the community relations, communications, events, integrated community back subcommittees. The community relations report sparked a thoughtful discussion about strengthening relationships with other agencies around Glencoe and ways the council can keep an engagement for future events. During the event subcommittee update, the attempt shifted to, the attention shifted to the villagers' light the light celebration. The conversation reflected on successes from the previous year and explored additional opportunities for the twenty four event. For now, subcommittee membership assignments will remain unchanged, other than Chair Raphael Boozman. Uh, is moved to serve as a safe loader of cross. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November fourth at five thirty.
That report, the next report is the preservation commission and trusty governor. Is our representative on that.
The preservation commission met on September twenty fourth. The commission, the commission. Uh, viewed a demolition permit for five ninety five Longwood Avenue. Property that while unique is not historically significant. After discussing its, discussing its distinctive features, the commission opted not to request a meeting of the homeowners. The commission also initiated a broader discussion on raising its public profile. The ideas include organizing lecture series, historic tours, community partnerships, and other public events. The commissioners are also working on a formal strategy. To promote historical preservation. Over the next year. Additionally, the commission continued their evaluation of mid-century modern homes in the village. Chairman Van Vecchion presented a list of some of these properties, which may hold historical significance due to their architecture, design, or contributions to neighborhood character. And this will be discussed at their upcoming meetings. So the next meeting of the commission is October twenty second. Five thirty P M. Sustainability.
That next word is.
Oh, tree commission, tree commission. Shall I?
Yes.
Okay, okay, the tree commission met on the twenty third of September. Um, we had an update on the windstorm and kudos go to staff for the cleanup after that big storm. Uh, it really cooperated with the village in certain areas and we did a great job cleaning up after that storm. The village staff gave an update on the phone tree planting and the ongoing redevelopment for Forest Edge and five Ryer Street subdivisions. They also finalized a proposed list of revisions to the acceptable tree planting list, and that is on the agenda later tonight. The commission celebrated the development of a Buckhorn herb site selection, collection program. To help incentivize residents to remove the invasive species from the property. The program advertised on the village website. And collection began on October seventh. The commission is moving forward with our next project and accepting nominations for the twenty twenty five Tree of the Year. And the next tree commission is scheduled to be on December ninth.
Thanks for that report. That concludes. The next item on the agenda, reports of officers. The manager's report, so village manager, Rowan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, and a few items that I want to report out on this evening. A variety of subjects, so my, my report's a little longer than it typically would be, so apologies in advance, but a lot of information to share. The first relates to a survey that was shared with a number of our residents who live in southeast Glencoe. Um, so I want to take a step back and just refresh everybody's recollection on, on what happened and what we were seeking and kind of where staff's recommendation is on a going forward basis at this point. Back in twenty twenty two, following the receipt of several complaints from residents in southeast Glencoe. Staff presented information to the village board at the June twenty twenty two committee at the whole meeting about a historical anomaly that exists in this area. Approximately one hundred and thirty one homes have Winnetka addresses, but are wholly within the village of Glencoe's corporate links. These homes pay property taxes to the village of Glencoe and receive all services that the village provides, including such things as snow removal, public safety services, infrastructure maintenance and investment, water distribution, and others. But these homes have a village of Winnetka address. The limits of other taxing districts that serve these homes are somewhat different. Less than half of those households are in Glencoe District thirty five and the others in Winnetka District thirty six. All are within the Winnetka Park District and all are within the Glencoe Public Library District. As we explained at that June twenty twenty two committee at the whole, some residents have reported confusion with mail delivery and other delivery services. And even some problems with GPS directions to their homes and general confusion. Following that staff presentation at the meeting, board asked staff to reach out to those hundred and thirty one residents and gather additional feedback before any action was taken to potentially consider. An update to those mailing addresses to reflect the fact that they reside within the village of Glencoe. Unfortunately, this project expels to the back burner and only recently. Staff was able to send survey materials to those hundred and thirty one homes, asking about their experiences with the address anomaly, engaging interest in a possible change. It should be noted that the United States Postal Service advised that if the addresses were to be updated, it had to be a full scale change and could not be handled per household basis. We shared a great deal of information in the letter survey that was mailed to residents and in turn took a lot of phone calls, seeking to better understand what the village was asking. There was some significant confusion about those questions, and I want to be clear that all the village sought to outline was that the anomaly existed. Uh, that, and if there was interest in making a change, which would not affect any of their other special districts within which they live in their corporate limits. We would recommend to the village board that we further explore the change, that it was only the first step in many. I wanted to report that of the survey, the, the survey that was distributed, we have had a substantial response rate. Seventy five percent of the one hundred and thirty one residents have already submitted responses to the online survey. And at this time, over eighty five percent of those who responded have indicated that they would like to have their mailing addresses remain as Winnetka addresses. Based on the overwhelming response to the survey, staff is recommending that we not act to make any changes. Um, and we would reach out to those residents in the area to share this information still this fall. And it goes without saying, but I, I want to note emphatically that despite the confusion that this has caused, the village will, as it always has, proudly serve all one hundred and thirty one of those households. Um, we're pleased to do so, pleased to take those calls and talk to people about what it was that we were trying to articulate and certainly had no intention of causing. Uh, the confusion that, that came from that. Um, I have had conversations with my counterparts of the village of Winnetka. Um, just to outline that, they were aware of this, they do, uh, they do know about the fact that this anomaly exists. Um, and I think we have been able to resolve any confusion that might have been, uh, between the two villages as well. And I wanted to report out on that, our recommendation is that, as I said, given, uh, what we heard from those who have responded to the survey, and that really was the point of doing the survey in the first place. Um, that folks are comfortable with status quo, we are comfortable with status quo, there isn't a preference one way or another. This was, uh, to some large degree in response to complaints that we received and concerns that we had heard with some of our residents in that area. So again, I wanted to just articulate that, that's our recommendation, unless the board disagrees, uh, we will, uh, generate some communication back to those residents.
Anybody want to? Yeah.
I'd say get back to them as quickly as possible to put their minds at ease.
Well, I, I think we've been able to put a lot of people's minds at ease in terms of the conversations that we've already had one on one. Um, and you know, some of those, some of those concerns were really just, um, there was a, there was a lack of understanding about the fact that. Despite their address, they actually are residents of Glencoe. Um, and talking through that, it's interesting sometimes that, you know, you don't, you may not pay attention to those taxing districts that are on your tax bill. You sometimes may not, you, you sign up for a direct debit on a bill and you don't pay attention to whom you're paying your water bill. Um, those kinds of things we recognize are, are sometimes easy to forget. Um, and so all of the intent behind this was really just to say, this unique situation exists, it has for decades and decades. Uh, and if you're interested, we're happy to talk more about it, but to your point, we will, uh, we will get that information out in the next week or so. Okay, um, just a bit of information to share relative to, um, the upcoming November fifth election. Um, we get a lot of questions at village hall relative to voting information. Um, I would encourage anyone who's interested in making sure they understand exactly what their ballots are going to look like or exactly where their polling places. Um, go to www.kirkcountyclerkil.gov. Um, there's actually a, a tool that generates your specific ballot for your address. Um, and you will be able to see that, um, and understand before you get to vote, uh, exactly what you're going to be asked to vote for. A few dates to remember, uh, the last day to register online to vote is this coming Sunday, October twentieth. The first day of early voting is October twenty first, Monday, October twenty first. Our closest early voting location to the village of Glencoe is Northbrook Village Hall, which is one, two, two, five Cedar Lane in Northbrook. That information is available on the county clerk's website. The last day for mail ballot requests is Halloween, October thirty first. The last day for early voting is Monday, November fourth, and then election day is Tuesday, November fifth. Got questions about, uh, the village's referendum question, and we're not will. Show up on a ballot, the village's referendum will be the second to the last question. There are two referenda in Glencoe, uh, this, uh, on this ballot, one for the village of Glencoe relative to the home rule question. The second is a referendum. Park district is putting forward relative to bond issuance. Neither of those, uh, referendum impact the other. Uh, we have gotten that question, if I vote in favor or against the village's referendum, does that impact our district's referendum? Does that? Those votes are individual and independent from one another. So just something that's to be mindful of, and I would just point to the fact that we've had our last public forum on the home rule referendum question that was held last Tuesday at the Glencoe Public Library. Again, our fourth, um, of those, really well attended, really great questions, appreciate the community participating, coming out and asking questions and getting more information. Uh, there's tons of information still on the village's website relative to the home referendum, just encourage folks to, uh, read up on that if they have further questions. Um, it is again time for President Rowan's favorite program to commence, and that is our annual leaf collection program. Uh, that kicks off this coming Monday, October twenty first. I've started to see piles of leaves showing up on the current line. Um, in anticipation of those, uh, leaf backs, uh, coming and taking those leaves away. Uh, there's a great deal of information on the program, including our collection map and other details, um, on the village's website. We do update that on a weekly basis to help under, help residents understand when we will be back through neighborhoods. Uh, and when, uh, they can expect those leaf backs to be coming through. Um, just an important reminder that public works director would be upset with me if I didn't remind everyone. Don't rake those leaves into the street, keep them on the parkway. If you rake them into the street, you clog the storm, storm sewer inlets, you don't want to do that, that floods the streets, that's not helpful. Um, if you see leaves in those inlets, we ask you to adopt that, um, particular sewer inlet and remove those leaves. We do get through all of our neighborhoods fairly frequently with our street sweeping equipment, but if you can help us out, um, that is always appreciated, although it does look like we're going to have. A couple of weeks of, of lovely fall weather without any rain predicted, so our, our crews will be out there, supplemented by a contractor who is, uh, who's working hard on that program. Uh, we've included in the board's packet tonight, our third quarter, um, departmental reports, we have hard copies available for the board. Um, I hope you had a chance to flip through it. Um, as we have mentioned, uh, each of the last quarters that we have provided this, this is a new initiative this year to articulate a bit of the work, uh, a taste, if you will, of the work that our village teams. Are accomplishing across the entirety of the organization, internal focus, external focus, and both. Um, and again, I think a really nice, uh, summary of some of the important things that are going on. Um, and again, this, this covers the third quarter, which is July first to September thirtieth of this year. Um, looking forward, the calendar year twenty twenty five budget. Uh, on Tuesday, November nineteenth, staff will be presenting the draft budget to the village board at a finance committee meeting for the coming twenty twenty five fiscal year that begins January first of twenty twenty five. We're anticipating posting those budget documents on the village's website for the community to review no later than November fifteenth, that's the Friday before. Uh, the meeting on November nineteenth will be at the village hall, so normally, uh, we're, we're in the conference room, the Morris Conference Room on the first floor. Uh, for that presentation, that is where we will be on November nineteenth, uh, so if anyone in the area is planning to participate, please show up there. We will be recording that meeting and posting it after the meeting's over. So feedback that's received from the board that evening will be integrated into the budget document for the December nineteenth, twenty twenty four village board meeting, where the board will be asked and consider its approval. Um, Deputy Manager CFO Nikki Larson's already announced that the property tax levy public hearing will be November twenty first, so it's, it bears repeating. Um, we are, we have presented and discussed that with the finance committee over the past few months, the levies proposed to increase three point four percent to lie to detail restrictions. Uh, and again, that public hearing is scheduled for that evening, uh, November twenty first, where we will be back here at the Taker Center. Uh, last but not least, Halloween is coming up, Thursday, October thirty first. I have been drafted into family. I have been drafted into family costume-wearing. And I'll leave to your imagination, but all I know is that in the eighties, I was desperate to have what I am dressing as. And my daughters really, really love something called hair bearers, and apparently I'm going to be one. So look for that on Halloween, if nothing else. Trick-or-treating hours will take place between four and eight P M. The village's website will have tons of Halloween safety tips. The annual Chamber of Commerce Halloween Hello, which takes place in our downtown, will be from ten to five that day. Don't forget, stop by the Village Hall, it is not the scariest place on Halloween, but we do a pretty good job of decorating. It's Village Hall Halloween, and we hope that every kid in town stops by. And one last reminder, don't throw the jack-o'-lantern away into your garbage after Halloween. Glencoe Community Garden is again a part, part with us for their sixth annual pumpkin smash. That's taking place Saturday, November second, ten to noon. We'll have plenty of information available on E-News and our social media platforms. All I have, unless if anyone has any questions.
Thanks for that report. I'd love to just add, by way of background, about the leaf collection program, or what was actually known back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, was adopted, leafs under program. That was something I worked on, I was a trustee. Many years that we did it by fellow trustees, and this was a good idea. The village manager thought this was hysterical, and the first machine was referred to settled on its side to the Rowan master, this thing, kind of collecting group. So it's, you know, one of my favorite programs, I think it's, and it's good for residents who don't have to spend their entire wallet bag. Okay. Village residents report only one item. And that's consideration for proclamations declaring November twenty-four is Native American Heritage Month. The proclamation was published online to the residents circulated to board members. I confidently adopted this as a system policy that Sammy has presented to us earlier. And plus, there are any comments, is there a motion to issue proclamation?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Harry's, oh, November, he'll stay in there. Next is scheduled, includes reports of officers. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda, consent agenda includes items that have been published online that can be reviewed by the board members individually or together as part of our committee of all discussions. We don't think they warrant any further public discussion, but now's the chance, if somebody thinks they do. And if there is, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved and seconded, I mean, the roll call on this.
Trustee Alwex, yes, trustee Lister?
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdog?
Yes.
Trustee Ruben?
Yes.
Yes.
Harry, consent agenda, next item on the agenda is regular business. First item of that, consideration for ordinance granting special use permit to allow interior design business on the ground. So we just reported this part of the avenue. And I'll ask our development services director, Taylor, to present, and very briefly provide everybody with ride for games.
Absolutely. So this is a posed interior design business, again, at three forty-two Park Avenue. This requires a special use permit because of the recent update to the zoning code that was adopted by the village board earlier this year that requires all non-restaurants, all non-retail uses, it's B one zoning. On the ground floor, to get an S U P. There's not much around, so it's only four and a ground floor. This proposed use is, again, three-four-two Park Avenue, between Bridge and Bridge. The proposed use is an interior design business. The applicant has stated that this is largely retail, that it is an interior design business. It's up until at least the start, it's proposed to be by the applicant. The business already has a consultant space in Chicago. Again, because this is non-retail, an S U P is required, although the applicant has a very small, to this business. The special use permit process, the two-step process. Step one is a public hearing with the zoning commission. This happened earlier this month on the seventh of October. The zoning commission holds a public hearing and makes a recommendation. And then one step two, which is the final step, where the village board makes a final decision on the application. A couple of things that the zoning commission considered when they had the public hearing. This space really is exceptionally small, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred square feet, with about two-hundred square feet of storage in the basement. So there were some questions about whether this could realistically, as a restaurant. For comparison, a lot of our restaurants are twenty-five-hundred to five-thousand or more square feet. I think the honey butter and the whole on this group might be switched there, but the point still stands that this is much, much smaller than our larger restaurants. Staff was looking for the smallest restaurant space that you think of in downtown Glencoe, and that's True Juice, which is about six-hundred-and-sixty square feet. So this space is less than half the size of True Juice. Zoning commission agreed, very unlikely this would become a restaurant. Retail, zoning commission also determined that this was, the size unlikely to have much of a different impact on downtown than a similarly sized retail space would have. There are criteria for special use permits, they're outlined in the original packet. These include some things like impacts on surrounding properties, public utilities and traffic, or unlikely this would have much of an impact on certain properties or traffic. Another thing to consider is whether a different location without an S U P department is preferable, that would be our point. Or the applicant states that this does have a reason component, if you want to leave on the ground floor, get a small space. And the zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this, and again, they determined it was too small to be a restaurant, too small to have a similar detail. There's been no opposition to this in public comments, did have several written letters of support, which are. And the applicant is here, seeing if you have any questions for her.
Just stating, is that you?
Yes, that's.
Okay. I don't think your request troubles much the same as us.
Oh, I just, you know, I think we're excited to be here and we're new members of the community. We have a house not far from downtown Glencoe, you know, two kids in school here. And yeah, I think, you know, I have a successful business out of Chicago, and I hope that it'll bring a lot of, you know, beautification to town. And also, I'm interested to know that we have, I've been learning a lot, at least two public meetings, I'm part of. I'm very interested to know there's a preservation commission. We specifically do a lot of work restoring historic properties, and we bought a home of our own that is a house we're going to restore. So yeah, hopefully it'll, it'll really be a nice part of the community, and we're hopeful that it will be approved. And then further, I just provided the feedback to Taylor that would be helpful to remind all landlords of this, because when we signed the lease for the space, we were not told about a special use permit. And so, you know, there's, I was lucky that I was in the position to not need to open right away. But should I have been someone who, you know, rented this space and then really needed that business for the next six weeks? It would have been a very typical situation.
I appreciate that suggestion. We try to do that landlord, should be, personal landlords care too, because they don't, you know, they can't charge.
We did reach out.
Of course we did. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the broker, whoever, nobody, nobody really. And, and I do think, I'm sure it'll start to become, you know, more of a thing, because I have friends that have studios in, when I thought Hubbard Works, and everybody knows there's a special use permit, so, which is interesting to be the first.
Well, congratulations, baby.
Clarification, if I were to buy a couch, how would the sales tax go to your Chicago business or to Glencoe?
That's a good question. Oh, I don't know, honestly. I would assume it would go to wherever my business is registered.
It should go to this.
I can, I can talk to my bookkeeper, yeah, I, I see.
Registered as an online sale, it'll go for destination, and then it depends on the site, or if you have two different locations, maybe. There should be a Glencoe, or actually, I think, doesn't have a law.
Anybody have any thoughts?
Yeah.
And this special use.
Okay, go ahead.
The village adopted the special use requirement, this is why I do encourage on the first floor to not use this floor. But that doesn't particularly make sense, two little tiny spaces that aren't suitable for retail or rest. So this seems to be a no-brainer, and first our zoning commission wants. Is there a motion to approve the special use?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Alwex?
Yes.
Trustee Lister?
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdog?
Yes.
Trustee Ruben?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, Harry, the special use permit is granted, welcome to Glencoe.
Thank you so much, thank you, everybody.
Next item on the agenda is consideration important, cemented in section five dash one-one for accessory structure and use of zoning code. And again, I'll ask our development services director, Taylor, to present.
President Rowan, this is a third step out of three or four zoning code amendment, which first came to you summer. This is a staff-initiated code amendment, intended to reduce unnecessary delays that we're seeing through requiring variations and project plan changes for residents and staff. And the intent of this is to continue to meet the intent of the zoning code. A reminder, zoning code amendment process, step one is initial village board consideration, this happened earlier in the summer. And at that point, you refer this code amendment to the zoning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation. The zoning commission held that public hearing and made a recommendation earlier this month, and we're now with the third and final step. This amendment deals with front setback requirements for accessory structures. Accessory structures are anything that is detached from the principal structure, which is the house directly from Glencoe. This is often a attached garage, we also include things like sport courts, sport pools, outdoor kitchens, food as well. There were some questions about whether AC units can include, don't typically include AC units like accessory structure. Structure, so you might already include this in this regulation. So the current regulation, as a reminder, is, says that no accessory structure shall be newer to the street than one-half of the block depth. The street is curved from the property. So it's strange, it's quite a setback based on lot lines within measure from the curve, which has often very different relations to the lot lines, depending on from lot to lot. The intent of this is likely to keep accessory structures out of the lot, and that remains the intent of this revised, the revised regulations per this. So I'm not going to get into this, because we talked a lot in detail last time, but this currently causes a lot of problems. The main problems are, it's very confusingly written, it's confusing for staff and for builders and applicants in a lot of different ways, and it also has caused a lot of unnecessary variations or changes to plans, or even abandoned projects. And we say that they're unnecessary because it causes variations and changes to plans for accessory structures that are not in the front yard, which we intend at this rate. Okay. So the proposed amendment is originally brought to the village board a few months ago, and is originally brought to the zoning commission. Instead of using the lot depth, measure, half a lot depth to determine the accessory structure setback, we propose that the accessory structure may not be closer to the front lot line than the furthest point from the front lot line along the building. So if you have a building in front, you find the furthest point along that building front, from the front lot line, that is your accessory structure setback. I would say on every single lot, you cannot have a accessory structure or pool or sport quarter in front of the house. It does not change the fact that accessory structures must meet front and side setback requirements. So the front setback requirement for the house still has to meet that, no matter what the house is, can't be inside setbacks. Current ordinance, the current code has, it's very unclear about how this is supposed to get applied to corner lots. This clarifies that, it says that it does not apply to corner setbacks, this is just for front setbacks. And then it also empowers staff to make reasonable applications on three lots, because it was also quite unclear about how to apply on three lots. And that means that staff basically can make a reasonable interpretation of why this function in the front yard and apply this setback to the front yard of that lot. A three lot is a lot that has frontage on two non-persecuting streets, so a street in front of it, that's your back end. So this went to the zoning commission, they had a public hearing. The zoning commission was directed by the village board from that first meeting to pay special attention to how accessory structures should be regulated near next to houses, as opposed to from behind houses. Because this amendment, as proposed, would allow accessory structures with the same setback from the front as the house itself. Accessory structures next to houses are not currently go-to. There are many, many examples throughout the Village of attached garages, outdoor kitchens, swimming pools, tennis courts that are next to houses, not behind. This would not change that. At the same time, on most, most lots, it would likely allow all accessory structures to be a bit closer to the front lot line. So the zoning co, the zoning commission thought about this in great detail, and they agreed that the current accessory structure regulations do not work, confusing. They don't meet the intent, they don't, they cause a lot of unnecessary delays. But they wanted additional distance from the front lot line compared to what staff originally proposed, which is the same front setback for the house and the accessory structure. So the zoning commission recommended an additional ten feet of front setback requirement from what, from the, that point along the front of the house. So this is the, the proposed amendment that's in your packet right now. I highlighted what was added by the zoning commission. This is the same amendment that was in your packet for the previous meeting, the highlighted part is what was added by the zoning commission per their recommendation. So it says that it shall not be near to the front lot line, the furthest point from the front lot line along the building front, building front is also applying some, it's great. On the principal structure of the lot, plus ten, this just means a nasty setback, can be from the front of the house. And then the part at the bottom talks about to the lots, basically giving staff the ability to make these. So in summary, on most, but not all lots, this amendment is going to provide, as proposed, some more flexibility for where you can locate the accessory structures, pools, et cetera, while maintaining the intent of the code. We'll not allow them inside setbacks, we will not allow them in front of houses. But it should help to reduce the number of unnecessary variations or people unnecessarily pushing pools or attached lots closer to the windows or bluffs in the backyard when these things are already located completely, mostly, most of the time behind the house. So the next step would be to move to adopt a new ordinance with any changes that need to be included.
Just a quick question. We, sorry, the only difference now is the ten feet. If they already reached the thing, that the ten feet is going to create additional problems while the accessory structure, that people think we're okay, so not be okay with required.
There are a, I would say that the overwhelming majority of lots, this is still going to provide more flexibility. Is there now? There are going to be a small number of lots where this could potentially actually increase the restriction on them. And those would be lots that are very, that very small, shallow, shallow lots, or lots where the. Or lots where the house is setback very far from the block. Because instead of doing the 50%, it's now based on the house location. So there will be a small number of lots. Some, there, there are examples for sure, we look at that, of accessory structures that will be pushed back 10 feet or more from where they are now. That is the exception. The answer to that is, in some, in some instances, yes.
Well, you know, if it turns out, I mean, I sort of get the point. I mean, our point is we don't, we have an idea of what's supposed to be in the front yard. And if we allow our accessory structure to just expand this, all of a sudden we have what appears to be an out of this to be. This fix, which is only, which may. Well, this time, it's, they come back, and we'll look into it. But this all makes sense to me, we've already thought about it. Are there any other questions about this? And if not, is there an issue to?
Just one question. Uh, we talked about discretion related regarding the three lots. Does that also apply, like, in, in the case of a house that is very setback? If, if there were something to be done within that 10 feet, once this passes that?
That's right, it, it does, staff would not have discretion, but yeah, I think it requires 20% overall setback reduction in the zoning board. They have to look at the variation process, but no, this, as, as written out, staffs have not had the discretion to reduce that. To reduce it on any block, but just give staff the discretion if there are, if it's a three lot of two point yards. We have discretion to choose which one of those two clients. That's only discretion.
It's not, when you look at codes sometimes, the three lot, the most awful thing is, well, where's my door? But that's not actually how a lot of codes are good. It's for three lots, which are rare, but do exist. So this is trying to address that, that it's some form of a call, what is the EFR?
Zoning commission, that seems smart. We can't be sure it's perfect, zoning ordinances are never perfect. There's, you always allow something, yes, you wouldn't like to commit something, or don't allow something. That happens, but it's pretty sensible, so I think a good idea. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as amended by zoning commission?
So move.
But move second, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax, yes. Trustee Listener, yes. Trustee Malopolis, yes. Trustee Underdog, yes. Trustee Ruben?
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, for some of those, uh, accessory structures. Next item on the agenda is consideration of residential property, village manager, actually the contract to construct long-term joint for the public safety department's living quarters. Reservation project, and amount not to exceed 1,600,000. Now, as our assistant, my group, for that benefit.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by providing a brief overview of the project background and why this renovation is important. Uh, calendar year 2024 and 2025 budget include funding for the complete renovation of the public safety department's dormitory and locker room. Um, as well as village halls, council chambers. These facilities have not undergone substantial improvements, uh, several decades, and are not in need except for the needs of current and future staff. Uh, dormitories, locker rooms, and shower facilities date back from 1956 and have significant deficiencies in need of addressing to ensure safety, privacy, and functionality for the village's public safety officers. Similarly, the council chambers last updated in 1992. Require facility and technology upgrades to support public meetings, staff trainings, and service our emergency operations center, or EOC, at times prices. In 2022, we issued a request for proposals for design services. And after a thorough review, Cluver Architects and Engineers Incorporated and AVI Systems were selected to design and manage the renovations from an architectural and design and audiovisual focus, respectively. This collaborative effort resulted in a project plan that balances R D for updated functionality and modernization while also keeping cost efficiency in mind. The proposed project timeline spans approximately eight months, uh, starting with the public safety dormitory and locker room renovations, this and about. The existing conditions, uh, share of here of the dormitories and lockers for the public safety department are in need of improvements. Currently, there are no walls or separation in. There is a laser here, but, uh, on the left side of there, um, that's where they, that's where the, uh, male public safety officers currently see, there's no separation there, privacy. There are no walls and sleeping space in the lockers, showers, sinks, and the locker room systems require replacement, re-tiling, updates. Lockers are also in need of, uh, replacement due to the age and condition of the existing lockers and unique needs of the public safety department. As we get into the renovations, this is a little more complicated than the last one. Uh, renovations will include the institution of separate individual bunk rooms, allowing for additional privacy, a desk, and a distinct living space for public safety officers when staying at village hall overnight. Additionally, the bathroom and showers will be improved to include a private changing area. Uh, bathrooms will be installed adjacent to the bunk rooms in addition to the upgraded showers. A replacement locker system, which was bid with an alternate locker system option for competitive pricing, will include specialized compartments for ballistic vests and other public safety equipment. The improvements to the locker room will encapsulate substantial improvements to the capability of supporting overnight and meeting the needs for 24/7. Space right next to the, uh, right here, next to the staircase is the hose tower. That goes two floors. Um, it was used to dry extended lengths of the hose before materials approved to a point where the space is no longer needed before its original use. As a tall room that is, you know, multiple floors and extends to the public safety bay, a partition floor will be installed, uh, in the middle. Um, and a decontamination shower and full bathroom will be added to the public safety bay, which will be a priority for construction, uh, kind of happening in one of the first, in the beginning phases, which we'll talk about in a second. To ensure the public safety officers have a shower on site during construction. Uh, in that same space, uh, that's actually going to be used for locker space, um, and then directly above that, will be the creation of a mother's room for use by staff. Work on the council chambers will begin once the dormitory renovations are complete in April of 2025, and again, we'll talk about dates and phasing in a little bit. Uh, with proposed renovations addressing programmatic needs of the chamber, uh, the space will become more versatile and available for a wider array of public assemblage and public and staff meetings. Chambers will also be designed for use as the village's EOC with that to the significant emergency. Here's some key product dates. Uh, bids were opened on October 9th, and staff received recommendations from Cluver on Friday, October 11th. Phase, for me. Uh, phase one will consist of the renovations to the public safety side, which will include temporary conversion of the council chambers into a living space for public safety officers during construction. From now until mid-November, staff will be working on the installation of drywall and lighting in the chambers, uh, for the use of the space. The architect and the staff team are anticipating phase one completion in spring of 2025. At that time, phase two will begin. As the public safety officers move from the council chambers, uh, but into their newly renovated public safety living quarters, work implements on the upgrades to the council chambers. Substantial completion of phase two and wrapping up of the entire project is tentatively anticipated for June, uh, 2025. Please note that this contract does not include the costs associated with new furniture, uh, for both council chambers and the public safety side of the house. Um, this will be included in the draft budget request for 2025. Initially, staff estimated the total project cost to be in the neighborhood of $1.99, including the audiovisual components, plumbing, post tower conversion, uh, and several deferred maintenance issues, including upgrades to the HVAC, um, and electrical systems. Uh, when we received the bids and the recommendation, our, our low bid was $1,620,000. Um, coupled with the furniture, furniture purchase point, uh, staff estimates that things are kind of worthy of the whole bit. So tonight's staff is requesting board approval of a motion authorizing contract, this construction incorporated, uh, for the council chambers and public safety renovations project. That, uh, staff are available to answer any questions for.
Thanks for that clear report. We have talked about this idea before. When the clear word is done, that will be this mess here. Our council chambers have been. For a long, long time, I periodically get complaints of. Quality of our. And screaming, fixing that, it's important to fix, uh, orders for our public safety code. So we do wish we were going to get when we got bids back, but it sounds like we flipped this, try to kind of find our architects. So, seems like a good idea to me, let's get the show on the road so we can get back home sometime here. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to? Construction of chamber and sitting for this?
I want to listen. How many bids did we get received? We, we put it out publicly and then they know it's there. Yes, they had it on our website and then the architect also had it on your platform, which goes out to there.
Great, thanks. And we, we take it a little bit.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
To approve. Okay, it's going to move and seconded, so a roll call please.
Trustee Hallwax, yes. Trustee Listener, yes. Trustee Malopolis, yes. Trustee Underdog, yes. Trustee Ruben?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The motion carries, uh, so, uh, next to this contract, we get the show on the road. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the confirming resolution, ratifying professional services agreement for instant information technology services with fall court law technologies, with 2019, in amount not to exceed $4,000. Now, as our deputy village manager and finance director, Mickey Parsons, presents. Oh, and we should include also the next item, which is consideration of the resolution, confirming resolution approving a professional services agreement for information technology services with OEM, Aiken, Buckler, Woods, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Larson. Larson, good job.
Thank you, President Rowland. Meeting here presenting items 7B for your consideration, which is the ratification of a resolution of putting up professional services agreement with fourth wall technologies through an amount not to exceed $54,000. As the board may recall, in the April of this year, the village board allocated $200,000 in emergency funding to address significant vulnerabilities within our IT network. Since then, the village has engaged fourth wall technologies to conduct a cybersecurity assessment specifically of our water treatment plant and sanitary sewer operational technology systems, as well as the village's network. As well as a physical security evaluation of key infrastructure of all of these systems. These assessments were critical to stabilizing our IT systems and guiding necessary upgrades that are part of the second phase of our network cut over. The contract before each night will allow fourth wall technologies to do their work with two additional phases. First, they will assess the cybersecurity of our financial and human resources systems, ensuring compliance with regulations such as PCI compliance, uh, for credit card numbers and financial information, and HIPAA compliance for any of the information that the village may have on file. Uh, and also ensuring that that information is properly secured, uh, and that we're treating personal data appropriately. Second, they will also focus on the public safety systems, reviewing their connections with external agencies and ensuring that we need criminal justice information technology standards, uh, set by regulatory agencies for handling sensitive law enforcement data. Pursuant to the board's authorization in April, approval of tonight's agenda item will not only authorize the work already completed, but also enable fourth wall technologies to proceed with securing our rating systems. Happy to answer any question.
Any questions, questions?
Moving on to the next item for your consideration, is a confirming resolution to improve a professional services agreement with OEM King Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $100,000. This contract is another critical component, component of our ongoing efforts to stabilize and modernize the village's IT infrastructure, specifically focusing on the second phase of our network cut over. The first phase having been completed in February of this year. As we mentioned earlier, we're to allocate an emergency funding in April to address these significant IT vulnerabilities. And while we've made progress, particularly with the replacement of some networks, such as in face month in February, as well as some significant cybersecurity upgrades, additional issues have been identified through continued work on our system, including the most recent scans performed by fourth wall technologies. These, these problems require immediate action, which brought the need to expedite our phase two network cut over. Pursuant to the authority granted in April, OEM King has been engaged to complete this work, which includes reconfiguring and monitoring the SCADA systems, our sanitary sewer lift stations, ensuring operational stability and security. Upgrading the core networks, which is to replace obsolete equipment that is vital for our internal communications. Installing the networking way to improve the security of data flow between the village systems and our external entities, such as our emergency dispatch center. Supporting the cloud migration, migration for the public safety department's CAD and RMS systems, which is utilized for their emergency calls and their reporting systems. Uh, this was a crucial update that was initiated by Glenty Dispatch to keep our emergency response systems running without interruption and also providing a redundant option. And lastly, upgrading the network connection to the water pump, providing a redundant connection to this critical facility. As part of this work, OEM King will provide 24/7 support throughout the various remaining steps of this transition, addressing any unforeseen issues that may arise during this complex process. And this will manage, will also manage the safe disposal of any outdated equipment to ensure that, uh, our systems remain secure. This work began in mid-September and is progressing on schedule, with completion expected in early November. Ratifying this contract will allow us to finish this crucial phase and further ensure the stability of our IT system. Any questions on this side of the slot?
Use one cloud. For village staff purposes, we're using this one, which is Microsoft.
Joe, what's, you know, you're on it.
No, I, we go on the cloud, assuming, or like, it gives us some scale to add, add reduced capacity when we need to jump, need to. Right, and, and you can add another one fairly easily because the competition and the prices are getting pretty fair between the two. Everything, three of them coming out.
Right, the reason, the reason why we're going to probably stay with Microsoft is because Microsoft is certified by F A C, like F A C rap. We're getting the, uh, the good pricing because of the contract with the state of Illinois. So we're getting the, the best prices for the specific subscription per user. And, and we get the redundancy in our cloud environment that is not provided on the, on the commercial level, uh, for any, any commercial activities. So it's a.
The state inclusion.
Yeah, yes, it's a state, it's a state contract, yes. There's different cloud environments that are provided from the third party vendors, yes, like, talent technologies they use in A W S. For our staff purposes, we're using just the Azure environment. Most amount of protection, same.
Any other questions? Okay, um, I think probably two separate votes on these.
You can do a single motion to approve that, President.
Okay. And let me just say. Information technology isn't, or should provide potentially a lot of benefits for us, to our job better. And, but the security issues. Create, you know, opportunities for disaster, uh, we have a lot of sensitive stuff. Water, you know, things like that, that, you know, that's, so, restrikt means important. But that we're looking at, with that, is there a motion to approve the two resolutions? So, is there a motion? So, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the two resolutions.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, which I wrote off, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Lister?
Yes.
Trustee Mealopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Those two motions, here, so we can, yeah. Okay, the last, I have all the corporation's resolutions, waiting for competitive bidding process, watch right. I can bring six to twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Blazer electric. And one jet, that Public Safety Director, John Parker, presents. Depending on how much we spend here.
All right, do you want me to break or?
As the last point for your business, I'm going to brief it yourself, or if you have work, that's next to the second story window behind you. I'll take it as a good indication. I've gone too long. So, um, by way of backgrounds, just to remind everyone, a significant function of the role of new research officers
Hi, thank you.
As well as Saturday. And since twenty twenty, it didn't perform in that function by use of the L P Rs. Previous to that, they were using the specific method of chalking tires, which is That said, as mentioned, the L P R system comparing the position of vehicles prior to the position they come from the second time. By ordinance, prepares two images of opposite operator that to compare damage as well as information without some actrically efficient issue situations. That said, we presently have one vehicle that has that mount on it, that vehicle, there's three vehicles that the C S O's use. It's a twenty fourteen Chevy Tahoe with a hundred twenty-five thousand plus miles. The other vehicles they use, twenty, twenty thirteen election, yeah, just, you can imagine, so point close to all car that was specifically made for chalking tires. And the third is twenty seventeen four as well, intercept. Typically, the C S O's are receiving hand-me-down vehicles from police patrol. Those vehicles have a purpose, might you bear their repurpose from police patrol because they have no longer, they no longer have a lifetime. We feel it's no longer cost efficient to maintain them as police pursuit vehicles and they're handed out to C S O's. This marks the first in anyone's memory, which is starting, pretending to purchase new vehicles for the C S O's. Now, I mentioned the L P R systems because the L P R system has very specific needs when it comes to size, height, and type of people that we monitor to be sufficiently effective. We initially were looking at some other vehicles and ultimately reviewed upwards of ten different types of vehicles for the specific purpose of identifying what will be functional for the system and also to be able to find, to grow our E V fleet, to further enhance our commitment to modification of fleet to more electric vehicles. What we found was the best vehicle suited for the purpose was a twenty twenty-four Chevy police pursuit vehicle, E V Blazer. So the Chevy Blazer, the E V version of it, we feel it meets our need. We feel it's the right vehicle. After again, it was mentioned, you compared the number of vehicles. We then looked to see, directly checking the general orders, see who offers those specific vehicles on the market. Typically, the village purchases our vehicles from dealers that have been awarded the suburban purchasing cooperative contract that allows us for competitive bidding process to already take place and we get the best price. In this particular instance, we, we checked with G, with general orders specifically. They informed us there were only two dealerships in the state that sold vehicles, that sold the E V Blazer. Currie Motors and Miles Chevrolet. Currie Motors, we have, we regularly purchase vehicles from them. G E, or G, General Motors informed us that, once we spoke with Currie Motors to get price, which is the price that we're back at, General Motors verified that that price is the same price as with other Miles Chevrolet, and that is in essence the lowest price. Those vehicles have already been ordered, I mean, they have already ordered fire, it's kind of, so those will be readily available. This prevents an issue where we found in the past, we'll be ready to make purchases of vehicles, vehicles of order, and then suddenly receive a whole slew of vehicles all at once, putting us on the book for not only, not only making large-scale purchase, but also second, when later on, when it comes time for those vehicles out of our fleet, we're, we're tied to, we're potentially tied to an excessive large purchase at the time. We've already funded, we already have, it's part of our C I P, and replaced with vehicle, one of the two C S O vehicles that was already ready to go. What we were doing, we're utilizing monies unspent from the second administrative vehicle to purchase the second. Now, lastly, it comes to the license plate reader system itself. The license plate reader itself is outlined in the memo. It's going to be purchased from, it's a Genetec system, this can be purchased as part of, come the five year, we can't let it be. Second, existing license plate reader system also include that price quote is to move that existing system to the second vehicle. Therefore, will double the amount, the potential of double the amount of L P Rs, we have not enough vehicles. Questions on that?
We have the license plate readers as we drive into town. Now we have license plate readers on vehicles.
So I, allow me, so license plate readers is a generic term. People can use it as a generic term, not, say, general. License plate readers that when we come to town, those are in fixed positions. Those have a specific purpose of reading license plates, it says. And that alerts us to, that alerts us to wanted vehicles, missing vehicles, people like, say, Amber, or it's silver, or it's those sort of things. That is passionate, as opposed to these vehicles, the L P Rs, the L P Rs were specifically designed for parking enforcement. The C S O's do not have access to that data as far as missing vehicles, especially wanted vehicles, hot cars. He's just, it is a licensed plate, an L P R system, but that's, it's a separate system in its entirety.
What's the short version of works for parking, of course? What's the short version of works for parking?
Uh, Reese, in, in an important, thank you for reminding, this will also help us support our virtual sticker program.
If you enroll, once somebody did a virtual sticker, they're going to be the nasty guy. They're going to be real popular.
Correct. Yeah, so as you're driving through, it'll read the license plate, it'll say, say, it'll say, and it also, like, mentioned previously, it'll compare the position of the vehicle, exactly where it was the last time, and also timestamp. And it'll say it's been parked here for three hours, four hours, and it's been too long, there are forcing violation. It alerts the screen, then the operator then gets out and issues a citation, also catalogs, pictures of before and after, for evidence purpose. If we contest the citation. Also, in addition to that, people have continually updating database of who has and who does not, who has and who has not purchased the vehicle stickers. Therefore, if, if it comes across somebody who has not purchased the purchase sticker, it'll alert and say, direct.
Expecting to see increased revenue from
There, shorthand for yes, but I'm always afraid to bring in revenue when it comes to parking.
I would just say to my point, that's not the intent. I think the intent is compliance always, and I think that's an important distinction to make. I, I would also point to this virtual sticker program as something we'll talk more about in the budget process over the next few months. But this has been an ongoing discussion among the finance committee and the rest of the village board about trying to streamline a pretty administratively heavy program that generally, the community has a mixed record on compliance with, and so I think the goal is to try to continue the program. This is a component to that, but I would say that the primary purpose of it in this particular instance is focused on parking enforcement, both in our commuter parking lots and in the downtown assistance district.
Do we have enough chargers for the new cars?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll do what we call hot-wrecking them. So what we'll do is we presently have enough chargers. So, but we will, as, as vehicles are charged during the day, we anticipate these things to be charged overnight. We'll just have to look around. As, if we add these two vehicles, we should not have a problem.
I would just add, I think I'm correct, it was the, with the, oh gosh, tire. The license plate readers for parking enforcement, to me, that feels really responsive to a lot of the debates we've heard from business owners, which seems like we spend a lot of our time talking to folks, assuring them, there's enough parking, and you park here and you park there, and, you know, to the extent that there's this ongoing concern that people are parked for hours and hours and hours of time, and we start doing anything about.
It does provide, you know, as, as Chief Locker mentioned, we've been doing this, with this current system since two thousand. It was integrated while we were in this pandemic, but it had been planning a couple of years prior to that. It has streamlined the process. It's made it easier, it's made it more viable and justifiable, if you will, so when complaints come through, we're able to compare, well, when we drove past, and we drove past two hours and forty-five minutes later, we're still there. And so that, that very clear data is also helpful in the department's work, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for the very clear presentation. I do want to reiterate, we are not purpose of Missouri, we're not trying to find a way to reach revenue through this, and it's what the manager said. My compliance, people are coming in out of parking spaces so that people are ready to be on town, let go when they want to be. Works for our residents, for our businesses. With that, is there a motion to approve the resolution waiting for competitive bidding for the two Blazers and the license plate reader?
Second?
Second, a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax? Yes. Trustee Lister?
Yes.
Trustee Mealopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Um, which carries, thanks for the presentation. Is there any other business? If not, you know, if there's a motion or move a closed section to to see, to like, party, to see one, one of the others.
Just leave it a closed section.
Okay.
Trustee Hallwax? Yes. Trustee Lister?
Yes.
Trustee Mealopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yeah.